Thank you, Laura. I'd like to call the meeting of the Hampton Board Selectment Order for November twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Please stand for the Pledge of Belief.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're meeting in the Town House Auditorium tonight, being recorded by our board and broadcast over Zoom. Is there anybody else recording the meeting? I don't see Dalton yet. Typically, the Hampton Times also records it, so I assume he'll. He's not waiting, is he, Laura?
No, I'm hurt.
I guess he's on something better do Monday nights.
Can't believe it.
I'm shocked.
I don't know why we're meeting that.
Okay. All right, first on, right now, Selectman Revest is attending remotely. Craig?
Hello?
There we go. So our board is called to order with a full, full compliment. First thing on the agenda are minutes. We have two sets of minutes, October twenty-third and October thirtieth. However, I don't think, Craig, you've got a copy of them, correct?
No, they're not in the, um, the shared drive.
Okay, so I would ask the board's indulgence to pass those to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Then, the first order of business is to welcome our honored guest. Hello.
Hello, thank you.
We've invited Ann Goby here, former state senator, and currently, correct me on the title, Director of Rural Affairs?
Correct.
Okay.
That is right, Mrs. Teal.
And your head, how is the, can you hear okay, Craig?
Yes.
Okay. In your office, is, is it up in Deerfield or?
It, it, it's actually my car. I don't really have a, a set office. I'm part of, just, for folks, and I apologize, I'm on my back to people. The, the office itself, as Director of Rural Affairs, when the governor was going around the state and, and after she became governor, she had said that she was going to be a governor for all three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns. One hundred and eighty-one are classified as rural. What we use as a definition for that is either if you're a community, under seven thousand people are less than five hundred people per square mile. And using that dual definition, you come up with one hundred and eighty-one communities. Majority are in the western part of the state. It was an awful lot. I live in the town of Spencer, which is a rural community. There's many in central Mass that are rural, as well up in, uh, like Essex area, in the northeast corner and down by the Cape. Now, you get on to Mathis Vineyard and the town of Gosnald with a population of thirty-four people. So, um, yes, so there's a lot of rural communities around the state. And part of my role is to meet with those one hundred and eighty-one communities. Because I am under the economic development umbrella to find out, you know, how we can be helpful, what we can do. And that, that's where we're at. And, and when you asked about an office, so I do go into Boston occasionally. And I have to say, um, I'm very happy that it's occasionally, because I would much rather drive sixty miles west than thirty miles or forty miles east.
We have a member of our board, Don Davenport, spent many, many years commuting to Boston when he was working for the Attorney General. Was it Scott at that time?
Uh, turned out Chief of Staff for Trangio Piladi and.
Oh, sure.
Harshburn, twenty-four years, every day.
Yeah, that's a lot of driving to Boston. You could do that one in your sleep.
I have done many times.
Uh, yeah, that, that, so you, you, you're very familiar with, with that ride. So right now, um, and I, and, um, I'm the office. Um, I am an office of one at this point, looking to bring someone on to deal specifically with grants. And I know that we're going to talk a little bit about that in, in a little bit. Bob and I have known each other for a number of years. And Bob, it goes back a bit, that we've worked together. And so I, I was thrilled when he gave me a call and invited me to join you. And so, uh, that, that's a very little bit of the background. I was in the legislature for twenty-one years, served in both the House and the Senate. And, uh, the majority of the communities that I represented, I had twenty-eight communities in the Senate and, uh, rural communities.
And I assume we classify as one of the rural communities, quite for our population. Uh, we are rural, we do have some things that happen in town, so I thought I'd provide a gift for you from the board.
I thank you very much.
Bob brewed that at home, it's a hunter-proof. No, I'm sorry. That's the other bottle. Maple syrup from Ferrandino's in him.
And thank you very much. Um, uh, my, my last name is Goby. My grandfather came from Biscara, Italy, and it was supposed to be Gobao. And, um, he put maple syrup on absolutely everything, and I, and I got that gene from him. So this won't last long. I love maple syrup, so thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
So, one of the things that, uh, led me to ask Bob to invite you here was I have a habit of watching other boards, other select boards around Massachusetts. And one of them talked about an RFT grant, Rural Farm Grant, or something like that. And I didn't know, in your awareness, if that was something that we would qualify for. And you would have more experience in what rural communities like ourselves could use to upgrade what we have here. We do have one specific project that they've come to the board's attention recently. And we could use your help, we haven't really addressed that issue in, gosh, Dan, when we are doing twenty-some, thirty years ago. It's a, it's a pond in town that has, I want to say degraded, but it's not where we want it to be.
It, it filled in naturally, yeah, over time.
Or something like that. Your experience, I think, would help us on that, and then you might make us aware of other ways that we can help with. Bob has been instrumental in, um, working on municipal vulnerability in our town as well. And when you talk about grants, Bob is the grantmeister.
Right.
So, and he's, uh, available, by the way, after January first, if you're looking for somebody.
So, a couple of things, I think I'll kind of work backwards a little bit. There are grants available. And, uh, one of the, the, one group of grants is called, um, the Community One-Stop Grants. And so it's kind of like one portal, and there's about twelve or thirteen grants that are underneath that, including the Rural Small Town Development Fund. That may be what that person was mentioning to you about. What's happening right now is that those grants were just recently awarded within the last few weeks. We're going to be doing another round of those grants. The statement of interest have not even come out, that probably won't be until January. So right now, we're doing debriefs with people who did not get the awards, just to, just for, um, there were seventeen awards made in the regional, uh, excuse me, in the rural small-town grants. Five million dollars is all that that fund has, and seventeen grants with a cap of five hundred thousand dollars per grant. Part of my job is to advocate for more money for that, and I'm trying to get that tripled and to remove the cap. Because, as you know, it's very difficult, you know, um, obviously a half a million dollars is a lot of money, but sometimes it's not when you're trying to do large projects. So I am making a push on that one. The other thing that I'm working on right now is to, um, look at, with these debriefs, I'm learning a lot when people come in about what they felt was wrong with the grant application, why they did not think it helped rural communities enough. So I'm taking that information in, and there, there will be some new guidelines coming up. So I will definitely keep Bob, because he'll, yeah.
We, we got a grant last year for seventy-five thousand through that one-stop program.
Okay.
Went to the town meeting, uh, because the, the, uh, firm that was preferred, uh, by the planning board to update the, uh, master plan, uh, wanted one thirty-four, I believe, one thirty-four, five. Went to town meeting and they said no. Uh, so I applied for another seventy-five, pretty much knowing that they weren't gonna give me two seventy-five thousand dollar grants for the same purpose, but we tried, but.
Well, one, one thing, I don't know, where does that stand then with the master plan at this point?
Well, we went back to the town meeting a second time and they funded it.
Oh, okay, okay. But I, I was just going to mention that with the regional planning commissions, they are getting some extra money for local technical assistance. And so they'll be, and I'm sure they've probably been helpful to you already.
They're very valuable, very useful to us.
I think that most of our boards, I know, planning reaches out to them quite a bit. I'm sure that, you know, we have the, the heads of the Conservation Commission here, and, you know, we've interfaced with PVPC many times on many projects. Uh, a great loss from Tim Brennan.
Yeah, very sad, yep.
A great fond of knowledge, really, the way he worked with every community was, you know, you couldn't ask for more.
No, Kim Robinson's doing a great job over there, and, uh, you know, she did some good, good folks on her, on her board. On the pond, uh, Bob had sent me an email, and I have to tell you, I, I went on Google to try to find it, I couldn't find it.
See, it's, it's silted in so much.
Yeah.
But, but I, I seriously couldn't find it on that. So whereabouts, where is it in, in your community?
So it's off of Mill Road, Mill Road Pond.
Yeah.
Um, Ted, can you describe it better? I mean, from a conservation standpoint, its status is a, how would you define?
It's not a great pond, it's small.
It's a small pond, it's, it's a, you know, it's, it, it's more wetland than pond. It has a feed-in and a, and a, a drain that when the Scantic River gets high, that's where it goes. That's part of the original, correct me if I'm wrong, back there. It's part of the original, uh, stormwater overflow when, when the area had bad storms.
Okay.
And.
So the red, the red outline up here is the whole complex. There's basically several parcels in it.
One sixteen.
The pond itself is in that lower section where you see the bright blue.
Yes, yeah.
And then the rest is the filled-in part.
Oh.
And then there's a whole giant swamp above it that drains into it.
Okay, so there's no homes on it?
No.
Okay.
Well, there's homes along the perimeters.
Right, other parcel.
Yes.
Right.
And one of the things, when we started, if you look at it, the, on the left side, the cul-de-sac comes in, there's a little red, a little blue dot right there.
Yes.
That is part of the same drainage area, and we have some, um, uh, neighbors that are infringing.
That's a vernal pool.
It's a vernal pool.
It's all wetlands.
And it's all wetlands, and it's all interconnected.
Delineated, there is all wetland.
And, um, the pond is, is, got some, used to have some use in that, when it was deep enough, you could, the, the local kids could ice skating on it and things like that.
Then a fish, you fish it?
And, well, there was.
There was a mill on it at one time.
Yeah, well, if you go back far enough, probably was a mill on it. But there are some, uh, fish that may get in there, but they're not spacked.
Yeah, yeah, people do fishing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And over time, what's happened, either by the Scantic overflowing, or by just all the surrounding trees dropping their veg, it's, it's slowly kind of filled. It's also, um, on the, the roads on the lower, uh, part of the screen, if you could read one, it says Collinney Drive. There's also a couple of, of town storm drains that empty and feed into it. So i- if it rises, the drains ain't gonna work, because now the pond is as high as the drains are, if you get my drift.
Yeah.
So it's got multiple uses that are being somewhat, um, jeopardized.
Part of your stormwater plan, so.
And also serves as part of our fire department.
Oh, yeah, that's right, it's also.
There's a dry one.
It's a dry hydrant there.
Without the depth in it, you know.
Gary, Gary, I specifically requested you to come.
I saw that, thank you, I appreciate it.
Why don't you come up?
Why don't you come up? You, you've got a lot of input. Introduce yourself.
I'm Gary Weiner.
Thanks.
Uh, I'm number one fourteen lot right there.
Okay.
Gary is an environmentalist by profession, so.
In late nineties, Art Booth and I, uh, undertook cleaning up the mill pond. Uh, we were able to secure conservation approval and get a dredge permit from the Corps of Engineers. I think the only one that year that was issued. And we started on removing the material. That pond goes back to about eighteen seventy-five, and originally served the Griss Mill, which is over way on the, used to be on the left over there. Um, and was used for fishing. It had, probably was around ten, ten and a half feet deep, uh, kids swam in it. And over the years, like I say, it, it fills in natural degradation, if, if nothing else. But it does serve as an overflow from the Scantic, and it helps, or used to help, preserve colony and bayberry, as you guys and I'm sort of reiterating, on the south here, who have drains tied into it. And they have cellar drains tied into it often. So when the pond would flood up, um, if it's, if the level is not correct, they, they receive flooding. But also, it serves on the far side, which doesn't show, of the Scantic River, uh, River Park and, um, the streets over there, and reduces the chance for them to flood. They do flood, but with the capacity in the pond, uh, available, it reduces the potential for them to flood and significant flooding back in there. And so with the dredge permit, we got most of it done until DEP got overly excited, because we didn't have a DEP sign up. And the, um, DEP officer at the time, um, took the contractor to task, scared him so that he pulled out. But before that, we pulled out about, hmm, I think thirty, almost thirty thousand yards of material out of there. And the highway department was able to use the material along their side for their, uh, um, grass seating and loming and seating on the tree belts. But it has significantly deteriorated, uh, to the point where it's probably four to five feet deep now. And, and shouldn't, from a stormwater standpoint, flooding standpoint, fire department standpoint, and an environmental standpoint, I mean, it could serve, uh.
And recreation.
Well, I was just gonna ask, what, is there a recreation component, so what if it was clean up?
It's somewhat, I mean, uh, my kids ice skated there, but it's getting harder and harder, one, the winters aren't quite as good. But also, the kids come to fish, and, uh, they love pulling the nap.
So the Scantic is a cold-water fishery, and it goes directly, the tributary goes right into it.
So, um, such a part of the, the Scantic with, with the, uh, that watershed group, are you active with that watershed group? Do they have any thing to do with it?
No one here, to my knowledge, is active with the Scantic Watershed Group out of Connecticut.
Yeah, okay.
They have sent us an invite a couple of times, and I've actually responded, but they've never responded back.
Okay.
So.
I just, I wasn't sure how active they were, what they could be. So, um, do, have, have you've done anything, any sort of preliminary, like how much it would be? How much would it cost to get the rest of that?
No, I, I mean, we go back to nineteen ninety, I think the town appropriated thirty-five, forty thousand, but that's old dollars compared to what.
Yeah. So is it all silt? I mean, is, are there invasives in there too? Or is it?
Not much, no, okay.
The silt's killed them all, right?
Yes.
The bulk of the cost, Gary, be labor? It sounds like the bulk of it was removing filth.
Yes.
So it's not like cost of materials has gone up.
And the surveys.
I was wondering if it was more of a double faceted type thing, that is, we have quite a bit of money in CPA.
Yeah.
So if there was a match required for some type of grant, I think it would apply under a couple of CPA things, either recreational or, you know, something else like that. If there was a grant that said, well, the town needs a match, we could come up with something on that. The thing that's always worried us, as Gary alluded to, is Corps of Engineers and DEP. We had a situation a few years back where something, a dam broke on the river, and we did a quick meeting with DEP, and we were looking at ten thousand dollars to fix it and five hundred thousand dollars in permitting.
Yeah.
You know, so we always, that always worries us, that regulations will cost more than the actual work.
Yeah. I know that you've mentioned the, the Army Corps a couple of times today, what's, this is just because you invited them in to work, I mean, they don't have them, they own it, so they automatically.
They, they were brought in because of the, uh, Wildlife Protection Act process. And also four oh four water quality certification that you need to go through, or needed to go through, and get the Corps.
Being a cold-water fisheries river, and this is directly connected to it, it's very, very sensitive. And it, the Scantic feeds to the Connecticut, which feeds to Long Island Sound, and if you know anything, Long Island Sound is being watched very closely.
Yeah, yeah. And essentially, this water comes out of the Scantic, goes down through the pond, goes out to the left there, and goes back into the Scantic on the left-hand side of the picture. So it's just kind of an off-ramp and back-on ramp.
Storage, recreation.
Yeah, I think the other expensive part would be, um, you usually have to have the sediment that you're taking out tested nowadays, and the testing can, can. It's nothing like the dredging and cost, but it is an expensive.
But the function has been lost, and that's kind of our thing.
Yeah.
Talk about the Scantic, and that's important, but if it's part of the Scantic cold-water system, it's not functioning. So we're looking to restore that function, I think that they would be amenable to that as well.
Absolutely. So the, the town completely owns it, correct?
Yes.
Town owns it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the town owns the property. There's a slight spillover to the neighbor, Lot one fifteen, um, the, the bank edge at the back of her property is part of the pond. But basically, the town owns one sixteen, that parcel there.
Okay.
But there's actually more spillover now, because of the spreading of it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a bit of a problem, too.
They also own that whole rectangle up above it on the other side of the road.
Yeah.
One fifty-four?
Yeah, one fifty-four.
Yeah, and we own ninety-five, too, where the, where the, where the, where the vernal pool is, too. Yeah. And that's one of the things, before it gets lost, that, uh, we were asking about, besides the dredging and all that, because I mentioned earlier that we're getting, we're getting some neighbors who are pushing the limits of their property. We would love to see the thing get re-flagged, delineated, red delineated.
Yeah, okay.
And marked.
Because we'd like to put up signs at least in the bottom two straight corners, and can't do that without getting a survey.
Okay.
So we'd like to have a survey, we'd like to have markers put up, like to have signs put up, as well as the dredging and, and. So that whole parcel, the ninety-five to one sixteen, that whole thing get properly marked and protected.
So kind of with your expertise, do you see that says leading into some type of grant?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think so, on a couple, on a couple of different things that came to mind. First of all, um, you know, you have to fit, you have to figure out, uh, what the engineering would be, right? And what the cost would be, so you'd have to do some sort of, to get some money for some preliminary. And, and I do think that there's some opportunities there. Uh, mass wildlife in the past has had grants for, for restoration of habitat. Uh, the, uh, Division of Ecological Restoration has funds.
I think right now they're only doing great funds, aren't they?
But I don't know, I don't know. I mean, they, they've done in the past, Ecological Restoration has done, you know, culverts, they've done small bridge projects, you know, those real small bridges, so that they do those things. So, um, I don't believe that they're just, um, um, just for great ponds, but getting to that, that issue about access where, where, at the, the northern end, where it goes into the river, right? The river goes, am I correct?
It goes into the river on the left-hand side and down the river on the right-hand side.
If I may, yeah. The river's here.
Yep.
And it comes in right this way, through here. This is the, the pond, and it goes along.
Yeah, okay.
Here in front, all the houses here have driveways with small culverts.
Yep.
And then it bleeds through, and then back to the Scantic.
Yeah.
If I can to add Griss Mill, if you would, Ted, Griss Mill. There is Griss Mill.
Way over on the left.
The cul-de-sac.
Right there, yep.
Yeah, just to, to where your finger was, just to your right, is another detention basin. Oh, yeah, right here. Uh, the original Griss Mill had two ponds, they had Mill Pond, but they also had Holding Pond.
Yeah.
Right there, and the Griss Mill was right where Griss Mill Lane is. And so that also acts as a stormwater management tool for preventing, uh, you know, the flooding and the back, backflow flooding for like River Park Drive, and the, the houses are on the other side of.
What shape is that one in? What shape is that one?
That one's in very good shape, other than the fact that it's a forest and it's been cut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those own that.
It's, it's, it's capacity is probably down by ten or fifteen percent easily, because the trees have grown up in it.
Yeah.
Um, we used to have cows walk through when Griss Mill Lane was, was built. Um, the farmer on the other side of the river had cows, and anyway, we put a culvert, an overflow culvert in Griss Mill, and the cows would wander through the culvert into that lower detention basin, and then over, up to the houses and graze on the front lawn.
If that's not rural.
That's right, that's right. So you, the, the MVP grant is absolutely, I think definitely would, would fit in with that as well, because, which you mentioned was some of the environmental. The other, the reason I was asking about where the river came, because the, um, the Boating Access Board, uh, we want to bring back for some recreation and for some fishing. If they, if there was, I don't know how much room is up there, or, or what there is at that northern end, but they could come out and, well, Doug Cameron and Terry Smith, Terry lives right in, in where, um, Doug and Terry basically run the Boating Access Board, and they could take a look at that. Because they could come in, um, i- if it made sense, and to put in maybe a car top access, so people would have access for, for kayaks and for, for, for shore, and shore fishing.
He's our boater here, but I don't know if the Scantic has enough water.
I've never been able to.
I don't know, that's why I was wondering.
I don't think it has enough water.
But if that, but if that does, with that pond.
Yeah.
You know.
Definitely. You could have the pond, but it doesn't, it's not very big.
It's pretty small, and I mean, they, on occasion, would throw a kayak in there, and historically, um.
How many acres you figure that is?
About five.
Oh, okay.
I think so. Um, but historically, they would fish, they've, they've, it ran more often than it runs now. And so there was a constant source of fresh water moving in and out. So it's, the fish in there, and they, uh, back in, they say in the forties, would throw boats in there and, and fish it.
Well, they, they can even do something, you know, they, they could set something up, they, just for shore access, you know, to do something and to make something that's handicapped accessible, you know, they work on stuff like that.
It was meant to be a recreation spot. We've had the local Lions Club put a couple benches in for people to sit on the shore. Unfortunately, because of the spreading now, the benches are underwater.
Is there a way, is there a place to park?
There's little parking off.
There's a couple places along the road you can park.
Yeah, okay.
With enough restoration, we probably could put a couple of spa, you could top spaces in.
Yeah.
You know, we wouldn't, I wouldn't think you'd want us to pave it, but we could certainly do some permeable surface parking.
I think maybe you could get some in along the side of one seventeen there. That's probably the most open space that you can get to from the.
But that's, that's where the fire hydrant is, though, too, you can't park there.
Yeah, that's the other thing. We have part of the place is marked as no parking, because if the fire department had to be there, they want anybody marked there when the trucks have to get into the dry hydrant, which is very important to us, we don't have any water other than that.
Yeah.
You might have a better opportunity on the north side of Mill, over by one fifty-three potentially. I know the wellens are there fairly tight, but there might be an opportunity for parking over there.
So, so those are some maybe smaller grant opportunities, same because dredging projects tend to be really expensive. Um, that you'd probably be looking, have to look to an, an environmental bond bill would be my guess. So the last environmental bond bill that came out, because there will be another one coming out, the last one was in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, every five years, it'll be coming out. There'll be another one that'll be filed, you know, within months, right? And the, the last bond bill, I know had money for inland dredging, because, uh, I worked on a project at, at Lake Wickabog in Westbrook Field. So there was language already in that last bond bill for that, and typically what happens is that the line item gets carried over into the next bond bill. So my guess is that there will be money there for some inland dredging. Of course, it's very difficult, you never, it, 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 it's one thing to have money put in a bond bill, the, the challenge is getting that money released, right?
We've lived that, we've lived that challenge.
But I'm just letting you know that, that, that's probably there, and you'll have an opportunity. You have a great, great legislative delegation with, with, um, with Brian and Jake, with, with, I shouldn't, Representative Ash and Senator Olivera. And I'm sure that they'll work with you to try to do something as the, the bond bill moves forward. But that, those would be my suggestions to start with, because you, you need to, you need to do some sort of, some sort of survey work, like you said, needs to be done. Now, I don't know if natural heritage, natural heritage might come out, but something, but once they come out. I, I don't know what you want.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of it, yeah.
Turtles everywhere.
We have turtles and all.
Particular area isn't officially in a, in a habitat, in a priority habitat. No, believe it or not, it's.
Thank you.
It actually has a lot of wildlife, it's just not turtles and salamanders, there's a lot of herons, there's a heron brookery near there. Um, a lot of that sort of.
Is there, um, I know it's all wet, the, on the other side of the, what's that green pass, those green passes?
One fifty-four.
Yeah.
That, that belongs to the town, that was, uh, deeded by the developer who did Mill Road and a number of the streets in there. That's, uh, basically, it's, it's flood plain, um, it was farmed for many years, actually. But, uh, now it's a new growth forest only in there.
When, when the water's high, like we had back two months ago, that was.
So nobody hunts back there, obviously, then?
Only in dry. I don't know if there's enough room to hunt, but even if they could, it, you couldn't do other than in very dry.
We had one guy one years, years ago, and he lost his mind. I mean, we chased him out, because.
Oh, too close to all the houses.
Everything's.
Not big enough.
Yeah, okay.
So, so if I could ask you, Gary, while you're here.
So we're looking for funding to, first of all, get an estimate of the cost of dredging. And then secondly, to hire a private company that would, um, have one of these machines, I think they call them mud cats, where they sit on top of the water and harvest whatever is on the bottom.
Originally, we were going to go in that direction, but the pond was small enough that a long arm droat was used. And we got to the center pretty easily, um, mostly because the it's filled, it had filled in so much that they were on solid ground and they could move themselves back after they got through the center of the pond. Um, so, uh, but if Mud Cat would go fast, no question it would go quick.
Would it be too big?
I think it's too big for this pond for the use that, again, uh, you know, excavating out from the edges probably is the way that that would a contractor would go. And you probably would get more potential bidders to do the work if they knew they were excavating. Mud Cat's pretty, uh, I don't say sophisticated.
Expensive toy.
Yeah, yeah.
But once the, once the dredge was done, what would be the long term?
Limited to
You don't want it to fill that in. So what would be the the mitigation so that?
I I think, you know, looking back at it now, hindsight's wonderful. If we had put a sediment four bay in next to one fifteen, the channel comes in and then hits the pond pretty well. But if you can construct a sediment four bay that's large enough to contain the larger flows, then you would minimize.
Can you do the, can you do that on town on land and would that have to go on private land?
There's enough room there to do it, you know? I think that that would, again, Mother Nature's going to do what Mother Nature's going to do and over time we'll all be gone, but it'll probably go back. I mean, it's been since nineteen ninety and we're now back. So what, forty, almost fifty years? But it's
And is that an important thing of the plan that we're looking for mitigation as well?
Well, I would think that that if, I would think it would have to be part of it because the idea is, you know, you're planning, you're planning forward and looking ahead.
Right.
And what can be done so that, you know, if the if the state or whoever is going to invest, you know, million dollars, because I mean, these are expensive projects, you know, the like to see something that it's not going to fill in in ten years and then you're back in.
Gary, there is a hydrological connection farther to the left, um, that comes under the road there.
Whereabouts? I'm sorry.
Um, about three quarters of the way over to the left of that marshy area.
Okay.
And I was wondering, was going to ask Gary, is, what do you think of the possibility of of looking into making like a sediment reservoir there that would grab this stuff before it gets across to the pond?
Yeah, there's a potential there. And and the thing is that whoever gets hired as the consultant to do this is Green. And Green says you are going to make certain that you manage your sediment load in in, because like you say, you don't, five years, you don't want it moving back to what it is today. So there there definitely would be an opportunity to do that and probably, uh, a second location would be off of Bayberry where the the drains from the southern portion of of the site there, uh, Colony Bayberry, all drain into the pond, you would probably put a sediment four bay there to and take care of that.
Do you think there's any chance that that watershed group has mapped out any of this? To to, okay, I didn't know.
We we contact when the Stormwater Committee was, uh, functioning, um, we contacted the Scantic River people. They never really were interested.
Okay.
But if you ever see our, the Scantic River here, when there's a good storm going, it gets quite muddy.
Yeah.
And a lot of debris. Coming off the hills, a lot comes down with it. So if it starts overflowing into this, some of the debris goes in. That's
Yeah.
You can see it. You can see it.
Yeah. So and then I guess my only other suggestion would would be, obviously, you know, I'll take a look at this. I'll go back and and talk to folks, um, back at the at the state level and some of these other agencies. But it might be worth reaching out and I can talk to Kim over at Pioneer Valley because they may be able to come up with some of the funds to help do that initial study. Because you have to start somewhere, you have to have a study. And, you know, I was going to say, you know, maybe, well, maybe over at, um, you know, I don't know, maybe the geology department over at UMass would have students, uh, you know, that that might be willing to do something like that. Steve Maybe is the state geologist and his office is over at UMass. I don't mind reaching out to him. I've talked to him. I've dealt with him for years on a lot of the crumbling foundation stuff.
Well, so you're saying possibly even a couple interns take us on as a project giver.
Correct.
Give us some unpaid help.
Maybe, maybe. And I I'm happy to reach out to him and see if that's even a possibility, if you want.
Well, anything, any source is going to help.
So, um, obviously, um,
Some of the math.
And anything I, any information I get back, I'll I'll talk to Bob, but I'll give him a call tomorrow.
Hmm, thank you.
See if, um, see what he says, you know?
Yeah.
Trying to get, but I, but regardless, I mean, you have, you have to have that done first. You have to have some sort of study.
Well, I think you see here, you know, we have the bore selection.
Yep.
We have the common, um,
Yep.
You know, we have, I think, the two major components that need to address a problem like this.
Right.
Will read in any other group, whether it's highway department, the, uh, planning, stormwater committee, things like that, that need to have a voice in it.
Right.
But we're all committed. And then we have the head of the community preservation committee as well. If there's an opportunity to get funds from them.
Right.
We can all show a commitment to where the process needs to go.
Yeah, no, I think that that's, uh, the anytime that the a community can put kind of skin in the game, if you will, that that goes a long ways.
Well, that's why I thought the CPC, you know, if we needed some money for matching or something like that, too, that would help with a different grant you knew about. You know, that certain grants say, okay, we'll give you some, but you need to show a little, like you say, skin.
Well, as I mentioned with the Community One Start, uh, there's about twelve different programs under that. They're all in the process now of taking a look and and redoing some of their guidelines. So it very well could be that maybe some portion of this project might fit into something like that.
Okay. And you've got the list of the names.
I do.
There we go. The rol- the rolodex is everything. That's why Bob has a rolodex that takes over his desk.
Showing your aid with the rolodex.
Look at the committee we have here. We all, we all know what I meant.
Absolutely. So I don't know, is there anything else I can?
Yes.
Yes. Uh-oh, uh-oh.
I'll get away.
Thank you, Gary.
You know, as you know, many of the municipal towns, many of the towns, municipal buildings are
Absolutely.
Small towns are in need of repair and renovation. A lot of them are meaningful to the towns because, you know, they they they're emblematic of small town, knowing when and they're important to the towns. Uh, Mass Municipal Association has proposed a bill to create a, something similar to the Mass School of National Assistance. Where's the administration standing there?
So I think you'll be very happy to know that that the governor and lieutenant governor are working on a program as we speak. And hopefully to have something, uh, released before too long, because they have heard of every single meeting that they've gone to. The lieutenant governor, as you know, did seven statewide meetings to meet with municipal officials. I attended six of those seven, came up at every single me- meeting because of the three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns, three hundred and fifty-one need a need a building or public safety or a highway or something. And and those are expensive. So, um, yes, so that bill, first of all, there is still a bill going through the legislature. Um, the governor is not going to wait for that. You will see something happening.
Right. And then the other thing, the governor, the governor, uh, launched the, I guess they call it a federal funds partnership.
Yes.
Uh, that's used to leverage state funds for first federal grant. If we apply for a federal grant or something, do we talk to you?
Yes.
Let you know or?
Yeah, I I would at this point, you know, obviously have have Rob and and speak with me because, um, I'm not sure how the process is going to work, but that is absolutely right. Uh, the governor has taken almost eight hundred million dollars, uh, from the rainy, for the rainy day fund, from the interest from rainy day fund. And to use it as leveraging, right, to use it leveraging. But but it should be extremely helpful. Now, I don't, is anyone here on those there's calls, were you on that call a couple of weeks ago with Quentin Palfrey?
Yes.
Okay. And there's going to be another one talking specifically on what you just asked about, Todd. So, um, yes, there will be a way to access that. I'm not sure how that's going to work, but that's the idea behind it. So
Yeah, we're waiting for the big money coming out in the spring for fiber optics.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. That's big.
But we've had the promises before. As we alluded to, we had a, uh, bond bill that was going to go through for one point three for sidewalk improvements.
Okay.
And made all the way to the governor's desk and five hundred thousand.
Crossed through.
And then an upgrade through town all for five hundred, all the way through, cut out of the budget. You know, we're, just like you said, Jake, uh, Eric at the time helped with that.
Yeah.
You know, and it just seems like the western communities, those are the first ones cut out.
Yeah. Well, it's a new governor. It's a new sheriff in town, my friends. We'll see.
Well, we like the sheriff we have here in Western Mass, too. So thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, um, if I can be helpful, we'll, I'll get to work on this and I'll get back to you as soon as I talk.
Great.
And, you know, don't, you know, call anytime I have. You know, you have my contact information. Uh, I can give you, I I don't care, people, I'll give you my cell phone number if you want it. It's five.
I have it.
He has it, if you can.
Disturb you, Bob.
Send it to wherever you'd like. And, um, that rings on this, my personal phone, feel free to call. And I'll make some calls tomorrow and see if we can find out for you.
Great. We can drive anywhere to pick up money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, thank you for having me and have a great Thanksgiving. And thank you for, thank you for this. Don't drink. Thanks very much. Nice meeting everybody.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Coming up.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thanks.
I think, um, because of the the issues we had been, uh, we originally written about with the Vernal Pool and people coming over those lines and some heavy equipment has shown up next to that Vernal Pool. Um, our our immediate plan is to access some of our mitigation funds that are in our own account just to have those two straight lines essentially surveyed and the right of way so that we can mark those
Okay.
sooner rather than later.
And you have your current funding to use for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, well, we have the five thousand dollars from the landfill and that, and I figure it's going to cost us about twenty-six hundred to get it surveyed.
Okay.
So that would, that's our immediate thing, I think.
I think it was last year you got, and you should have gotten another.
Yeah, it hasn't happened yet, but
Oh, Cliff.
I'm working it out with.
It should be the second payment this.
She's emailing with Richard.
Yeah, we figured rather than citing all the people around who've been encroaching, the smart thing to do is just mark the border.
Right.
And let them know, uh, where the real line is.
And honestly, some people may just, may not know.
I suspect that's exactly.
Move out. You buy a house in the country, you don't come with a manual.
Yeah.
Like the, I remember Pam told us one time, some lady called the town hall looking for the water bill. Open the door and look in the cellar. You hear it? So open your electric.
Exactly, same thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Um, we do have on the agenda an update for stormwater through on there. We we have Gary, uh, John here. I don't know if anything you guys want to chip in on that as well.
Well, the big stormwater thing that's coming up for us is the solar on Glendale. We've got the NOI. It's the first meeting of it's going to be in December.
Okay.
And the stormwater that goes with that's about that dick.
Oh, my gosh.
It's ubiquitous. So it's going to be a biggie deal.
And that you, that got forwarded to planning, right?
Yeah, we'll be doing some planning. We'll be doing some.
Okay. I didn't know if we had an update on the MS four, if you reached out to Ty and Bond or anything.
Uh, did, uh, uh, assume that Mark was going to bring us up to date as far as we are at this point. Um, there is some synergy between our MS four permit and the municipal vulnerability program that we have in that in both cases, we're going to be looking at some green infrastructure uh, to help control not only flooding, but also on the other side of town, uh, the MS four permit anticipates exactly what we're looking to do on on the east Main Street area.
Is that part of the rain garden plan?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. In other words, you do plantings and other other, uh, green infrastructure, so called, so that you absorb more water upstream into the earth rather than getting it into the river or the streams and sending it downstream and causing flooding.
Catch it on people's lawns instead of elsewhere. And in the forest.
Got a lot on your plate. All right, Todd.
We have a, uh, year five and a report due on September thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Ty and Bond.
I I looked for that. I have not received it. It was due on the thirtieth, right?
Right. Is there a public information set? We already had that or?
Yeah, there was a meeting in, right, May, you know, they have another one that they have to do.
That's like that, right?
But if you could track that down, you know, just for our records.
Another public meeting, um, and we did one in May.
I think we know when.
You know, in connection with grant money, I looked at that Long Island Sound Program three, four months ago for another issue. And even though they were specifically interested in certain chemicals, I was interested more in like PFAS-type chemicals.
Mm-hmm.
But they said that they're going to broaden the program. So, I mean,
Well, that's encouraged.
In the future, of the year or so, it's worth keeping that program in in mind because Massachusetts is considered a tier two, a tier two in their, in their program. And obviously, our streams drain into the in the Long Island Sound eventually, so.
Great.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. So if you could touch base with Ty and Bond, see, you know, what their schedule is on the, as Don said, for Okay.
They have to have it by September thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you.
They should have had it by September.
Maybe I'll check the junk mail.
Well, maybe there's someplace.
Lauren's still working through another five thousand emails, I think, right? So.
The chairman? Yeah. Ty and Bond has not submitted their annual report yet. Is that what I just heard?
That's what we think we hear, yeah.
We haven't seen it. September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
September thirtieth, it was, not only due, it's not, you had to sign off on it and it had to be in the hands of the, uh, EPA copy thereof.
Well, it had gone to us. Is there a chance it went to Mark?
Yeah, yeah, I think it did. But I I don't have a copy.
Okay. Won't you touch base with Mark tomorrow and just, and Ty and Bob?
Do we have to sign up with a selectment?
Yeah, you, yeah. The the annual report requires a selectment to sign it. And and the copy needs to go to the EPA because then otherwise the the clock starts ticking about investigation or looking at why you don't have it.
Well, that was during our transition time. So let's just make sure it didn't fall to the crack, check with Ty and Bond and check with Mark as well. Maybe it's stuck in the department. Okay. Again, thank you all for coming out tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is the RFQ. How's it going? Ed, Mark? Gentlemen.
Evening.
How's the, our process going?
Hopefully, uh, if you had a chance to take a look at it.
I I think it's a
Okay.
Standard, pretty standard.
All right. We corrected all the little things you talked about the last meeting, a couple verbiage things.
Right, right. Um, so one of the questions would be putting in the dates, I guess, is kind of finding out where we're going to be at with it, you know? When are we going to be able to release it, bring it forward and what your guys' thoughts are?
What do we ask this RFQ to do?
Basically, what we're
Firms, uh, would submit their qualifications to do the project.
What's the project?
We renovate.
Right. It would, it would be selecting a firm that's going to take basically everything that's been done to this point and come up with two options as part of what they're required to do, two options to bring to us the town. And of those two options, we would select
Mm-hmm.
which one is the best one we want to bring forward.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last phase is they would take that one we select or hybrid and then do basically a complete project, blueprints, ready for, you know, budgetary purposes, ready, ready to bring to the town. So that's
Yeah, the RFQ process is an end run around the competitive bidding requirement.
Mm-hmm.
The argument was, back when they made these changes. The argument was back when they made these changes that if we just hire an architect or a design firm on the basis of price, it would not always be satisfactory. And so they allow you to ask for qualifications, in which case they'll tell you the projects that they've done in the past and what they think they can do for you. Once you've settled on a firm based on their attractiveness and, and background and so forth, then you negotiate a price. And if you can't negotiate the price with your top firm, then you go to number two.
A price to do what?
A price to do.
I, I've just hung up, we've already hired two of these guys.
Yeah.
They spent seventy thousand dollars and we haven't gotten any further.
This would be architectural design.
Of what?
Renovation and/or expansion, whatever the, whatever the project needs to be. Basically, what we've done so far, we've had conceptual drawings basically of all, you know, the Mitchell Report and Tech Time, there was no blueprints, there was estimates of what, you know, vast ranges. So this is taking what the work that's been done to this point and saying, okay, meeting with the building, the committee is, this is what the needs are of the town, what we can.
Who's the committee?
Well, that was one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was, you know, we've got a couple of people and.
Our board as well.
Oh, absolutely.
Right.
Right, because ultimately it's, it's the board.
So this is moving it ahead, basically at this point. This process would require no money because again, you don't, until you get your bids back, then you figure out, okay, Firm A wants thirty thousand, this is very similar to what we just did for.
Because it's exactly the same.
The one that's qualified, it may not be the lowest, but and then you figure out, as Don said before, how are we paying for it?
Right, and that, that's a couple of options. And, and that, and obviously it's up to the board as far as.
Right, but I think, and Don's been pretty good so far at always mentioning, you know, we can't keep kicking the can down the road, we gotta get going here. He's, I think his point is that what is our end goal? What are we asking that we didn't ask before? And I think at this point.
That we don't already know.
Right, but I think you're right, I mean, we've got a couple of, I want to say napkin drawings, but we need something a little better.
I think if you had actual blueprints where you could go in front of actual contractors to get pricing, no, no one can give you an accurate detailed cost now, so some of the drawing, if you have blueprints, it's more firm.
But I, I guess, I guess my question is, we haven't decided what we want to do, we haven't decided whether we just want to take all the Mitchell Report and do all the renovations, the heating, the windows, the doors and, and all that kind of stuff. Or do we want to put on one bay, two bays, three bays? So I don't, I guess, maybe I'm just not very astute, but I can't figure out where we're going with this.
Don, Don, nobody said that out loud, okay?
Um, I, I don't know, it was about a month, maybe a month and a half ago, I brought that drawing in front of the board.
Yeah, yeah.
Just goes to three bays.
Yeah.
And then that, that was when, um, the board addressed us to get an RFQ in place to continue.
So are we asking, so is this, are you asking to take your drawing and say, okay, we want three bays, I forget how much it was two bays?
Not necessarily my drawing, but I thought.
I think it really gets off the dime at that point, you know? Like you said, Mitchell came back with six different plans and.
Sure.
It, I'm going to say it muddied the water, but it didn't provide definition. I think what Don says here, we're wrong, we need definition.
Yeah.
Where are we going with this? Right now, we know we have a space issue, we know we have a.
Health and safety.
Modernization issue as well.
Right.
And if that's how we can address that, we may not be addressing the other question of, if we want to say EMS service or something like that. But right now, we're getting the major two things out of the way.
Right, because I mean, this kicked off almost.
And who's to say they might not say in their thing, this plan will take care of one and two and still leave an option for three down the road? Okay, right.
And that's what we have flushed out in the process of them coming up with two plans, you know, narrow down. The good thing about the Mitchell Report is that you guys have seen it, that was a fantastic assessment and that, that's a, did, they did a really good job.
They've got data they can work with.
Oh, absolutely, you know, of, of what's wrong in their recommendations, you know, like everything, their recommendation was new station for sixteen million. Well, you know, that's not going to happen, but, but you know, somewhere between, you know, the two million, just repair the most critical things and sixteen million, there should be a solution somewhere in there. And that's, I think, what this is, is to come up with a firm that's going to give us a couple.
Okay, is it still PVPC that's, because I see the ref, you know, any details, you know, direct them to PVPC?
That's, that's who actually wrote this.
Right. Are they still going to be the, the interface person?
They don't, they don't need to be, they don't need to be, so, I mean, that certainly can come out, he just had that in there if we wanted to have it, if someone had a question on it, but that's certainly.
Fine, but I mean, is PVPC doing it for free or as part of our?
They could do that, but there's no reason we, I mean, we, the town can't, you know, have the committee do the selection process, I mean, they could do all that, but it, there's no reason why we can't, you know, decide once we get qualifications back, who would be the best vendor to go with.
Okay. Well, I go right back to Don, we got to get off the dime here and move forward. You know, and like I say, putting an RFQ out, you know, it costs us nothing.
Right.
Not like the other reports that did cost us something, okay? We paid for them, right, the next evolution in it is to get something out there and to come back, this timing hopefully might, I don't know if it'd be ready for the spring.
It, it, it could, it, it certainly could. Um, I did sort of some quick math going backwards is spring meetings usually May, beginning of May, first week, something like that.
Second Monday in May.
Second Monday in May, so pushing it back a month, saying you have, you'd want everything done by the beginning of April. Okay. From beginning of January to April, it's seventeen weeks, might not sound like a lot, but that is, there's quite, there, there is a fair amount of time.
Well, I'm looking at the fact, we just did the, matter of fact, we had a meeting of the senior center building committee today.
Right.
And talking about the timing, you know, you really can't look for the town meeting date, you got to push back to advisory, the fact we.
Exactly, and I missed a meeting a month and that's certainly.
SB, HC, whichever.
Right.
Uh, even their timing is going to be pretty late.
Right, right, right.
Back to me and the firm we chose, still waiting for an official document from, from Bob.
Right.
To tell him to go ahead and they haven't gotten any paperwork yet. I think, but their meeting with us is, you know, because they, they expect they're going to get it based on the action, but they'd like to see a contract or something.
I think with what we've done so far between Mitchell and the Tech Time Report and our, our sort of sketches of what we, we have a lot of information, whoever the vendor is, that we could say, okay, guys, this is what we've got so far, this is what we'd like to see, can you put something together for us? So we can start to get some real, real world numbers, what would this look like? Now, we don't need needs assessment as much as maybe the senior center does and deficiencies, we know everything, that Mitchell Report is kind of the bible, so we've, we've pre-bought some of the stuff that they might be having to do time wise, so it's aggressive, but you know, it could be doable to be have a product to bring to spring, to town meeting, which would be our goal, because if not, we'd lose in a whole other year.
Well.
With this.
I go back to the comment before, we got to get moving, we got to do something.
Right. First stop, we're ready and we've got everything.
Right.
You know, as much as we can bring it forward as far as ideas, I mean, we've gone to the police station, we've just kind of seen what they've done for configuration and, you know, we've, you know, working within our, our walls, if you will.
Don.
Okay.
So we need to clean up a couple of things in there.
Yeah.
The, obviously the pre-submission date, pick a date after we publish this, you know, this typically two or three weeks after or whatever.
Right.
You know?
And I can, I can say.
Around the holiday times and all that.
Yeah, and I'll post it on combis.
Okay.
And I don't think it would meet the threshold.
All right, so I'll take a, a motion to go ahead and publish the RFQ, so something to.
We'll send it around. That we know and we'll, we'll publish it on combis.
Okay.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
I, I guess the, the question is now though, should we be looking into establishing a building committee for the fire station, for the fire department, like the senior centers got?
You know, now that we got the RFQ out the way, we got a little time to put out a little notice, anybody willing to serve, submit note, submit their interest to our board. You've obviously got a couple of people in your department as well.
Sure.
You know, I don't know if we want the entire of our board or one rep, like we have basically in the senior center. Uh, you look at the police station, Don, I think it was like seven people maybe, Don, Rick, Gary. I think it was total of seven people in that group.
Do you have to be a resident of the town to be on the committee?
Honestly, as an ad hoc committee, I would say no, but.
Yeah, we don't, someone's got expertise.
Sure, that's what you want.
Right.
But still unfunded, let's be clear. Right. There we go.
The days, bye bye, it's getting out.
Throw them in there. That's good.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Yay, search.
This came in today from Community Paradigm. Uh, we had sent him the pictures and he, um, wants the selectmen to review it, recommend any changes. The only area that I saw here that, uh, my question, I don't know the last time that the town received a bond rating. Uh, it hasn't been recently. So he said right up here has a double A bond rating.
I think it does, we could check that.
My guess is if you went out for a bond rating, that's probably what the town would get.
I would think so.
So we, we'll go with it.
I think I saw there's only two communities in Mass that have AAA, it's Boston and somewhere else.
Yeah, there's not very many.
Right. Um, I do see the yellow part there and I have a concern about that. Uh, I know we talked about that, but I prefer to see, I mean, I know it says plus minus.
Yeah.
But I prefer to see it a lower number of plus minus, I mean.
Okay, just, uh, send me a note in the morning and I, I agreed with him that I would, uh, talk with him tomorrow sometime after hearing selectmen comments.
Yeah.
So.
If you're doing plus minus.
Subtract ten.
One ten plus minus.
Subtract ten.
You see what the candidates are.
Yes.
Bob, is that on Laserfish?
Pardon me?
Is that document on Laserfish?
Uh, yes, I believe I posted it on Laserfish under Town Administrator under Search.
The fish, all right.
Were you able to find it?
Pulling it up right now, yeah.
You have it?
Yeah, it's here.
Well, if you have any other comments, I'm probably not going to try to get in touch with them before noon.
Okay.
Let me know.
All right. Thank you, next on the agenda, cable contract, Don, you had a pretty good memo here, appreciate that. So we haven't. Have we heard from John?
I've not heard back from him. I'll reach out again tomorrow.
Hey, we need to, I mean, I'd like to have this discussion, but I'd also like to have it with the guy in front of us, either live or on Zoom, I mean, it's, otherwise we're just.
Making stuff up.
Shooting up, you know, basically, yeah. Um, so tell them we expect them at our meeting next week, basically, I think. We're a customer. Okay, we're accommodating, we can do live or Zoom, but we expect to see him.
I left a message about it, but yeah, I haven't heard back.
Well, also to Don's point too, we're also in the informal stage now, right?
Right, right.
So.
And I don't know, um, Don, is there any recourse to say, I don't want to say the state is an oversight? I don't want to say we're going to report it to the state for lack of communication, but honestly, it's been a lack of communication.
Yeah, there has been, but the state does have a, uh,
Ombudsman or something.
That you can talk to to help us with the contract, so maybe we should just call him and say, gee, you know, they've never gotten to us, we got four months to go here.
Yeah.
What should we do?
Uh, maybe the first, maybe the first contact would be like, we don't want to have to reach out to the Ombudsman.
The expiration.
Yeah.
The more pressure you're going to get from residents, you get a contract signed.
I like Don's idea there.
Yeah.
Why don't you give the.
Hold a stick out there, basically.
Why don't you give the Ombudsman a call tomorrow and, and, you know, we haven't heard from them, uh, what should we do?
Okay. Uh, zooming right along, so the lease, I know that Rose is still, uh, reviewing that, again, you get some of these, just like we saw, I think, Don with the, uh, the national grid or ever source.
Yeah.
You know, they send the contract, it's all their way. You got to be careful that paragraph five subsection C doesn't turn all the money over to them. Um, one thing that did come in here, and I was hoping that maybe Cliff or Dick could look into that, is that we have been seeing the adjust, adjustments in lease on an annual basis. I know it shows up on the green sheet, but the green sheet is not unfortunately is part of the, uh, document that's saved on the, the town website. So I do want to see the escalator has been factored in. Greg, you've made a point about the, the rent free part of the police communications and that is in the agreement. So the question is, I know we're paying rent, but I think it's probably to the tower on Commercial Drive, which is not on town property. So I want to be.
Is that what that was?
If there's police equipment on the one at the landfill, that is on there free per the agreement, so if we're paying, that's a big mistake.
Yeah, we need to find that out.
All I know is that he said we had to pay rent, but that could have been to the tower at Commercial Drive, which is also, I believe, owned by SBA.
Right. We should have that back from town council.
I would think, yeah.
He's had it for a while.
Short week, but. Ready, condition used of school, Don, thank you for that report for Aaron. So this is something I asked to have on here. And thank you for the AW Brown comment last time, Don. Um, you know, we got the report from Roy Brown several years back. Um, I really would like us to, it's our building. If the school department's not going to go out and see what state the building is in, I think we should. Uh, whether it's, and go back to the Brown report from, this had to be, gosh, five, six years ago, didn't cost a ton of money. I mean, I think it was maybe five thousand dollars to do a hard assessment of the bricks and mortar. You know, I'm now looking to see if you need new ceiling tile, I want to know if the wall's going to stand up.
Yeah.
And I'd like to get a couple of quotes on somebody to do that for us. I think that's reasonable.
It's our building, it's me there.
We, just like we got a report in every other building we have, so. And look, if there's major flaws, we'd have to fix them, we know about the roof, we know the parking lot is not exactly pristine. I don't know how your transmission was or your suspension was after the last time meeting, but, uh, so in the, uh, the list of things the school's aware of, I think most of them we're probably aware of too. I do question the asbestos abatement, I'd like to see a little more definition of that. As you're aware, abatement is, heck, a lot of times they've all said about asbestos, don't touch it, you're fine. If it's pipes, they wrap them and they're good. If it's floor, I understand that's a different thing because they're sanding them all the time and they're worried about that coming up. But pipe abatement really doesn't got a lot, costs a lot of money. Especially if it's in, uh, like the boiler room or something like that, you just wrap them and you leave them alone.
Wrap them up, yeah.
Right, so I kind of questioned that number. I thought, and Don, you probably can remember this, the floors have been addressed.
Those, I thought they did those.
I mean, I've been walked over, there are a couple of floors that look old, but.
I think they were done years ago.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, so. I'd like to see a little more background to that number there. The rest of the things are more incidental to the school process, when you factor wireless access points.
PA system and that stuff.
Cameras, that might be something.
We could benefit from that PA system.
Yeah, say down the, well, the PA system is probably more of the Charlie Brown type, where you didn't know what the name was that was being told to come down to the office, squawk, squawk, squawk. But the camera thing, if there was a change in the status of the building, I'm sure the town, of course, would, would want good security for anybody working there. Uh, that's a pretty good price on the paving of the parking lot. Honestly, when you consider what the price was projected for the senior center, which was over a million. Uh, that's a pretty good price on the roof too, I have to say. I know I did hear from a firm a couple of years back that was interested in mitigating a roof cost if they're allowed to put solar on it. And that may be something that's still out there as well. So. No, we can, we can reach out to a couple of firms. Let's look out to a couple of firms where the hall does that, that work still or Trevor Hall, anybody like that? Oh, so Mark wanted to know about getting rid of some old equipment. Unless somebody here needs an old cloud.
Yeah, you, you could have a copy of his.
Yeah.
Request.
I wouldn't know who to call, I assume, and he probably does. But he's looking for the authority from the board to go ahead and start that.
It's lovely junk. Not going to get much money. Clouds and all steals. Yeah. And you probably, probably get more for the steel, for the metal and the.
Exactly.
The use of the thing.
Yep. So Don's got a motion to approve the request of the superintendent to get rid of it.
Second. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Frank, thank you for staying on. I know you're not feeling well. I appreciate it. Okay, we got some unnoticed from Concom with some personnel changes. Uh, you probably should have brought it up while they were here.
I put uh something in my report also.
Okay.
I met with Bonnie this morning and we talked over the space issue. Although there's some uncertainty now with Granby.
If that guy starts.
Yeah.
You know, the conservation agent longer than we had you, but he's never actually been here.
Uh, the two options are to expand into that storage room or to move, eventually move those storage cabinets out and set up a couple of cu- cubicles there, one for the vet's agent and one for conservation agent.
Um, Lauren, do you have a list of all the different permits for operating?
Not one less, yeah.
Alright, uh, before we do grants discussion, this is annually, the board does vote to sign licenses and permits. Uh, typically, we don't list them out. We we rely on our staff uh between Lauren and Jane, you know, with the help from Bob, they have vetted all the people, all the firms that have come in asking for renewals or grants of new licenses with background checks on occasion, bond requirements for auto licenses.
Pay the fee.
Pay the fees. Don, make sure the check's clear. Thank you, Don. So I'm looking for rather than basically a blanket approval uh for the board to sign the licenses for used car food licenses. Uh, let's see, we have, oh my God, what was the one, uh, frozen?
Frozen.
Frozen dessert.
Frozen desserts. Don wants to do an inspection.
They give us samples this year?
No samples. They're they're closed. The general license, boy, that sounds pretty uh I know, the general, oh, jukebox. Uh, Don will check the music they're playing. Look at Don. You don't recognize it? It doesn't go on?
No.
No. The common Vic. Or the common, go ahead and say it. Right up there with the Yeah, thank you. Septage haulers, which is surprisingly down. Typically, we see forty to fifty of those, yeah.
What about liquor licenses?
Where are we with the liquor licenses?
Um, I've gotten most of them back. I'm still waiting on a few.
Okay, and then the entertainment licenses as well.
Entertainment.
Yeah, so we'll see those probably in December. Cause a little more background, I think the chief reported on as well, right? So we have fourteen septage haulers, fourteen common Vic licenses, one general license for the operation of a jukebox, twenty-six disposal works installers, which is uh, I think typically signed only by the board of all. So Greg, that'll be your motion. Uh, two frozen desserts, one swimming pool, which is down at just Great Horse now since Mercury is out, fourteen used cars and twenty-seven food permits. Isn't one of the other ones board health only?
Um, I believe it's swimming pool. I forgot to mark that one down on this.
Got a swimming pool here.
Yeah.
No, swimming pool, I think it's all of us, but so first I'll take a a motion for the septage haulers.
And will we uh authorize the scientists the permits for the septage haulers contingent upon uh
Everything.
Out of fees, collective fees and
Second.
On favor? Aye. Common Vic, fourteen common Vic licenses.
And move approval of the common Vic licenses. Contingent upon
The same stuff.
Paying the fees and taxes, et cetera.
And background, oh, yeah.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Uh, general license to operate a jukebox at the VFW.
Is it still nickel?
I think it's electronic, it's probably electronic, no.
Have they updated the playlist?
Jukebox at the VFW.
Second.
Of his favor?
Two fro- two frozen desserts.
Move approval of the frozen dessert license continued upon the proper reports.
Second.
No samples? No, okay, all favor.
Subject to samples.
One swimming pool, and this must be at Great Horse, I guess.
Move approval of the swimming pool at Great Horse.
Subject to all.
Subject to all.
On favor? Aye.
Regulations.
Fourteen used cars.
Isn't that about
Wasn't there twenty-something last year?
Yeah, yeah.
Move approval of the used car licenses continued upon the chief's, uh, the chief has to check that, right?
I don't think the chief, but they have a bond.
A bond, right, have to bond and uh taxes and fees.
Correct.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Um, twenty-seven food permits. Is that typically a motion of the board of health, Craig, I think?
Yeah, usually it's, yeah, it goes through the board of health.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-seven food permits for twenty twenty-four, subject to all fees and uh background checks.
Second.
Second.
No, you're making
Oh, yeah, sorry, all in favor?
Aye, thank you. And Craig, there are uh twenty-six disposal works installers. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-six disposal works installer, subject to all fees and required uh notices.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. Great job, Greg.
I gotta come in and sign them.
That's all my, your arm will be, uh, grants discussions. So I think this might have been me. Can you remember, is this on?
It wasn't me, no.
You? Okay. Kind of a quick thought. This is um I think one thing you've heard forever, Bob, is you do a great job on grants. And I was kind of thinking about going forward, you know, we have obviously transition happening here. But I want to know the board's thoughts on um maybe you seen if Bob could help us out with the grants, you know, after his transition. And if you had like a little, I was wondering if it could be paid like administration fees out of the grants, and I'm told typically they don't allow that type of thing.
Not anymore.
Right, so if there was some work involved in administering grants and stuff like that, that I can't imagine being too much that the board be inclined to like uh provide, you know, that type of payout attempt help to keep Bob in either managing a current grant that's going over the first of the year. I think, you know, Bob has said something. First off, would you be willing to do it?
Um, I'll have to uh talk with you separately because I have another, I have other plans. Uh, but uh
As a general discussion?
I I do, I was thinking today that uh there's so much out there and there's more and more bureaucracy involved that um when Community Paradigm does identify a candidate that you're going to hire, uh, at a very minimum, I need to sit down with that person and just go over what we're doing and what's required.
Sure.
Because it's not just applying for grants, then you have to manage them administratively, which and everybody wants a quarterly report and and it it gets to be fairly bureaucratic.
Okay, well, is there something you might entertain? Yeah, I want to bring it up as a not a decision tonight, but just something I want to throw. Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, um, and TA report.
Okay, um, uh, I did meet with the administrative person for the Conservation Commission this morning. Uh, they did review our candidate for Conservation Agent and Stormwater Coordinator. Uh, they are favorable. Now we are waiting for Granby. Um, I did get a communication from the Chair of the Conservation Commission in Granby that the selectmen um wanted more information. I think they probably put on the brakes and my guess is that there wasn't enough communication with them. I hope that gets worked out. There was a plan that the the candidate would go before the Conservation Commission in Granby on the fourteenth, which did not happen. So I'm, we're waiting to hear. And uh anyway, we have some other issues. Uh, John Cushman has relocated to the town of Lee and has resigned. I don't know if these resignations, these resignations are uh official yet in the sense that they were filed with the clerk. But this is what Bonnie told me is in the process of taking place. So he's leaving. Uh, Cindy Connors apparently is leaving as associate. And Mr. Netherwood uh is going to be the associate based upon demands on his time.
So basically Andrew would resign from the commission and the commission will appoint him under
Correct.
As associate, which is their
Yes. We were also told that the two members who were here tonight uh are gonna finish their terms in the spring. So I think uh the message is that uh we need to actively recruit and provide some training for new Conservation Commission members because as of the spring, if all this happens, as expected, it will be, we'll have a Conservation Commission with two members.
You'll have Greg and Tom at that point.
Yes.
Our recruitment.
So
See, and that really surprised me in uh you know, what Bonnie sent along, that the Concom member does not need to be a resident. I was very surprised at that, the state enabling residency is not a requirement. It may be in your local. And we can look at that in a local bylaws, but they did send the MGL like
There are a number of boards where that's not required. Assessors also don't have to be residents.
Really?
No. Because that skill is not so easy to find.
No, no, but that can't be, it's an elected position. It must be residence.
Right, yeah.
The chief assessor, the hired one.
If it's, if it's appointed
Yeah.
And your chief assessor and so forth, it doesn't happen.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so preparing the application for MBI's hundred and forty-five million dollar program, which is
Need all of it.
Coming.
Make sure you put that down.
I mean, uh, after the new year, holiday time off, uh, we've talked about consolidating the two half days and having the town employees have December the twenty-sixth off.
Okay, and I think that was uh universally endorsed by the
Everyone seemed to like that. So we have a consensus of the board for that.
Sure. So basically, Don, it would have been the half day of Thursday before Christmas and the half day of Thursday before the first, which were both on a Monday. So there's no advantage to having, so roll both of this is Scrooge. So when you, when you heard back from everybody, I don't know, Lauren, everybody seemed to think it was a good plan?
I didn't hear anything besides the twenty-six being good for everyone.
Yeah, and I did ask, uh, when I was at the senior center for a building committee meeting today.
Yeah.
The five employees there thought that was a good idea and, but they're printing the scribe December, so they
Becky today.
Try what the days are.
So.
It's Boxer Day, any of those.
Saint Stephen's Day too, I believe.
Twenty-six, two holidays there.
All that, yeah.
Okay, the board endorses uh December twenty-sixth as the two half-day holidays for the landmark. Correct?
Correct. Okay. Uh, I thought I'd point out that we have a significant number of vacancies on our boards and committees. And that uh, if there are any who are meeting in tonight, uh, we need an assessor, a cemetery commission member, a conservation commission, conservation commission members, capital planning commission member, commission on disabilities member, cultural council member, fiber optic committee person, and historic commission, which is, there's two vacancies.
Yeah, only one of these is an elected position, so the assessor would be
Right.
If so appointed would be until the town election.
They'd have to run for re
Right, um, I know there's also
Cemetery commission also.
Down here? Yep, okay. And the um COA, I think also, they only have one member under sixty.
Right.
So they could use another one there. And then, of course, like we talked tonight, there may be a building committee for the fire station or that type of thing. So.
Okay, preparing contract for the architectural service for senior center. Actually, there again, I'm waiting on Town Council. For the fire department and the master plan projects, I have
Excuse me for interrupting. Why don't we, why don't we put a, why don't we pay for an ad in the, in the paper? Like a half a page, Camden needs you.
Yeah, I was just gonna say something like that because we need
The scribe.
On the website too.
Put in the scribe.
Put in the scribe as well. I mean, that goes to every household in town, sure. Maybe a robocall from Bob.
You like the idea of an ad? You like the idea of an ad there?
Yeah, lists all the things.
I think so. I think, I think an ad like there might, might get more interest in people that don't normally either check the website or, you know, read, you know, town billboard somewhere, you know?
Yeah. I like the idea of the robocall from Bob, everybody, hey, little picture of you as Uncle Sam, Camden needs you.
Okay, uh, I have
That's going home.
I've signed the contract for Academy Hall work, uh, coming out of the special town meeting. I've also signed the contract for Van Ness Hagen for the master plan. And I'm waiting for uh Town Council on EDM and uh but now we know what we're gonna be doing with the fire department.
Okay, so isn't it two contracts for Academy Hall and the other?
Correct, tastings and, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Laserfish progress, um I, these are some of the firms that will actually input old documents. We're kind of in low gear. I I'm trying to get departments to move ahead on this. There's a fair amount of pushback because people say I'm very busy. I guess I appreciate that. But um, we have made a little progress, not just my desk. Lauren, I don't know if you, you probably have noticed what she's done in the selectmen's office.
I saw the dumpster was full.
Take a look at Jane's desk. So the dominoes are beginning to topple over, but
I did see the
We need more of an
Planning board have minutes in Laserfish going back to nineteen eighty-three.
Yes, yes, exactly. Uh, need a date for the ADA training.
I thought Becky gave us a couple of dates.
Print it on the other side as well.
Yeah, she wanted to get through uh the open enrollment, was it, Don?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought I was picking a date in December. As long as the DLC was happy with it. Rings a bell. And that's pro Arbor Day, right?
Yeah, okay. Still working with Rise on EV charging.
Gary had a conversation with the uh
Yes, he sent over a map, a proposed map, and that's going forward. Uh, grant contract for design uh of the East Main Street Bridge is completed. Project will kick off on November the twenty-seventh. And today I attended, yes.
So we have another uh teams meeting on the other bridge in December.
Yes, we do. Right, we have three bridge projects. We've got the small bridge program. And we've got the Rocka Dundee Bridge Program. We've got the East Main Street.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of, actually, I haven't seen much about that Ballard Brook South Road Bridge.
South Road.
Yeah.
Uh, I haven't either. I do know that it meets the standard and we have, we have a a grant uh for, under the small bridge program.
You know, it's one of those ones, like they said, it's not in danger. And when they get through it, they're paying for it and get it done. As long as we have plenty of notice for the residents, that's the key part.
Also, I was just gonna say, lastly, I did watch an MMA webinar today on the twenty-four budget. It was very exten- extensive, very informative. And they're going to be sending out uh a recording of it, which I'm going to send to you. It's really worth your time. It's not just about uh unrestricted general government aid. It's about a lot of different programs that the administration is planning and funding, so.
Alright, thank you.
That's it.
A report back. We did have a senior center building committee meeting today, and I think in response to uh the board's question on membership a week or so ago, they, Don Collins took a vote of the board. They're gonna recommend Mike Duran fill the the ninth spot. Mike has attended every meeting so far as part of the public. And I know there was concern on the board that do we need to keep an odd number just in case something comes up? At this point, like you say, he's completely read in because he has
So that'll come in on your meeting on the twenty-seventh?
I know, I made the point, you're not appointing, you're recommending to the selectmen
Right.
That we appoint.
So we'll put that on for the twenty-seventh. Will they have it in in time?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
All right.
Oh, Don's got a big, I think he's got a big Thanksgiving planned, Don Collins, but I'm sure he'll get it to you, so. Um. That's it from my board. So, Don, how was the, how was the planning thing going?
Uh, planning thing, we're supposed to be the fourteenth, but we had to postpone it because we couldn't get a quorum, uh, so we're meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, uh, the Conservation Commission, of course, Judy mentioned they got a. Notice of a tent on the five thirty Glendale Road. Solid project, so.
Now, my understanding, so the only thing they filed with, they filed Z V A a bit, right? They did something, got a list of a butter from Z V A?
They got a list of a butter, but they haven't filed with Z V A.
Yeah, but they've got the, they're not going to planning, they're going to go to appeals. Is that?
I don't know what they're gonna do. They, right now, they just file with Conservation.
Yeah, they filed with us and we're gonna meet with them on the twentieth. And, but if I'm not mistaken, their list of a butter, that may have expired, isn't it? That has a limited time of that, uh, of, of vacation or whatever. So I don't know.
Are you waiting for a D E P? Are you waiting for a D E P number as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can form D E P, they know about it.
All right.
I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I. Secondhand, so I'm not necessarily sure, but I think we got a response from D E P. They're not going to issue the number until they get more information, I think.
Okay. I'd also like to reach out to, uh, Steve in Amoresco. I'd like to find out when they're actually turning the project on, since I think it'd be nice if we were there. Yeah, they got the fence, I think all panels are up, but like, no, when are you actually turning it on? You should cut the ribbon, cut the ribbon and get it up there. The pole part, I mean, the panels are done, so it was all, I think they had to wait for that easement to get the pole work done.
This brings up another issue. Uh, state statute allows. Uh, towns to assess from January until June.
Right.
So if he turns it on in January, you're not going to get any revenue until, until Jul- July one. So it's worth considering that the next town meeting to accept that state enabling legislation. Which would allow the, the assessors to take any new growth. Uh, between those, that, that last six months of the year. Because their numbers, their new growth numbers are as of January one.
Okay, some of the talk about with our general ads in the list of the assessors meeting, we're having. Yeah, you know, Don's got a couple of things.
I, I did, I talked to Kelly about it and she said, no, the town meeting has never accepted.
Yeah, well, that's it. I did, uh, based on something that came up a few weeks ago, I did get that updated list of things we've accepted. I forwarded to the board from the town. I think it's pretty comprehensive, but if there are other ones we're not aware of, we should stay on top of that. Different things that, different M G L things that require.
Yeah.
Local acceptance before you can put them in place.
In this case, I'm just thinking out loud again. In this case, there, there is a pilot. So.
I thought that was pretty comprehensive. All right, Craig?
I have nothing to report.
Excepted. Okay, we have the tree lighting coming up. That's exciting. Uh, we're thinking of either John or Tad to be the master of ceremonies, leading us in song. Don said that last time, that's where we're looking at. No, we're very lucky. We're actually having the, uh, is it called the choir or the chorus or?
Yeah, it's called, yeah.
So Green Meadows is coming up again. Uh, we're very fortunate that they're singing and we aren't. So we appreciate that. And Craig, of course, will be the, the big helper with the audio work. Thank you, Craig. And we have the new tree to celebrate. Thank you, Jane. I think she planted it herself. I think you made that point before, Don.
Right.
No, but, uh, and I appreciate the decorations that were done, uh, Jane and Mike, I think what's? Did that over the weekend and it looks pretty nice outside.
And said she spent six or seven hours.
Sixty-seven or sixty-seven?
Six or seven hours.
Okay.
A lot, a lot of time.
A lot of time, but well appreciated. And Mike just came along because she told him to, right? That's how it goes. All right, anything else to come before the board?
Most of the journey.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.